11:30.
Thank you. I'll call the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, May 24, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference. Which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city website calendar? The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman Jettie will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll. Call attendance, actually, I don't, yes. If you're participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting which was required under the right to no law. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Kamau.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Cathy.
Present.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons. Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here.
You have 14 in attendance.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening is Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton and Economic Development Director Tim Cummings. In lieu of the mayor's remarks, I'm gonna invite Economic Development Director Tim Cummings.
Thank you, Madam President, through you to your colleagues. My name is Tim Cummings, I'm the Director of Economic Development. The mayor couldn't be here this evening, but he did want me to pass along and express some comments to you all relative to R-22038, which was filed and part of your agenda this evening. R-22038 is before you this evening because we recently learned that the state of New Hampshire is ready to fund the squaring off of the Walnut Street Oval. This project will be designed over the next year, and the construction would not happen until after that design is complete, and we expect it to be a multi-year project. Between the state program and the new federal infrastructure money coming into the state, there is a high level of confidence that this project will finally move forward. At any rate, this project has been a long time coming and is a piece to help improve the connectivity to the Veterans Memorial Parkway, i.e. the Broad Street Parkway. The design will contemplate straining and aligning the Central Walnut and West Pearl Streets, essentially squaring off the oval to reintroduce a street grid. This has been a priority expressed by the city for many, many years. Over the coming months, we will be working with New Hampshire DOT, and one of the first elements is having a local match of capital funds authorized. R-22038 is the vehicle that provides this local match. Understanding that the Central Walnut and West Pearl Street project would be underway, it became apparent that changing the condition of West Pearl Street now made more sense. Therefore, R-22038 also authorizes a West Pearl Street streetscaping project in an effort to take advantage of some efficiencies by aligning it with the state project that we'd be undertaking. All of these changes will allow us to take additional steps to bring us closer to ultimately doing what has been expressed as a longtime goal of the city, which is the reversal of West Pearl Street. So I wanted to make those comments to you this evening and let you know that that is why we recently introduced R-22038, because we received some new information that we thought was exciting, and we wanted to start the process on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cummings. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Alderman meetings of the April 11th and April 12th. The accepted placed on file and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Matt Sullivan, Community Development Director, regarding the referral from the Board of Alderman on proposed ordinance O-2211, amending the zoning map by rezoning land situated north and south on Lake Street and west of Pine Street from local business LB to local business with mixed-use overlay district, LBMU.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
And a communication has been received from Larry D. Goody, Chief Executive Officer of Penachuck Corporation, regarding Penachuck Corporation's request for approval to renew and extend its line of credit with TD Bank, N.A.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication as read and referred to the Penachuck Water Special Committee. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have four speakers that have signed up. Carl Seidel, you have three minutes, please. Give your name and address for the record when you get to the podium.
Carl Seidel, 39 Pilgrim Circle in Nashua. I wanted to just address the first, the issue of the new management of the public access channel. I am very concerned that we don't, we have a smooth change of operation so that we don't have any operational problems during this summer, because it's a very busy time for our group. I speak for the group that I have been operating down there at the, for interviewing people. I've been doing it for about 10 years, and concerned that we have a smooth change of operation and that the concern, I still consider it a people's place to make comments that are of public interest. And I'm looking also for what they mean by a contract for all the producers that have shows down there right at the present. So that's my concern, and I like to see we grow that operation so it's more of a public service than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Marku.
Good evening, Adam Marku, for Delore Lane. I'm president of the Nashua Teachers Union. I'm gonna speak on the food service contract, but if you'll indulge me for a minute, I am a teacher and a parent, and another rough night for parents and educators in our communities across this country. So I'm grateful that my three children are home and safe, and we recognize and grieve with those families in Texas this evening. The food service budget is before you, the contract, rather. This is one of our groups that worked tirelessly during the pandemic. For those of you who don't know, while kids needed to eat, and they came in every day, made lunches, breakfasts, found creative ways to get those to their kids in their buildings, and have worked tirelessly as we struggled to find food service workers, because economic times, everyone needs help, and their pay has not kept up with some of those other places. This does a lot to work towards that, but as I say at every contract negotiation session, there is more to be done. And a lot of times, we recognize schools for the work they do, and teachers get a lot of the credit, and they deserve a lot of the credit. But a lot of the credit goes to the food service workers who feed a majority of our kids breakfast and lunch every day. And for some of our kids, if you believe it or not, they come to school to eat, and because they have a connection with that food service lady who hands him the milk every day, and that's a positive experience for him or her. So we need to recognize the work that they do.
One minute.
Is beyond just making lunches. They have those connections, they know their kids, they know when one of their kids isn't eating, they know what to do and make sure they have what they need. So I saw on the agenda that almost all of you endorse this, so I'm not really worried about the vote, so I thank you in advance for approving this and moving it forward. Thank you.
Bob Bartis.
Good evening, Bob Bartis, 102 Emmer Street here in Nashua. Since March of 2017, I'm the owner and one of the operators of WSMN Radio here in the city. My business partner, George Russell, and I have done a lot with local programming and local content since that time, including remaining open throughout the entire pandemic. We look forward to bringing further local programming to cable access. We created BRB TV, standing for Bartis Russell Broadcasting, and we created that entity in January of this year in order to put in the proposal for tonight's vote. We plan on keeping existing shows, we plan on expanding the content and the hosts, we plan on utilizing the Performing Arts Center to its full of capacity. We submitted a proposal for a three-year contract to operate and to manage the public access channel. CTAB and the Finance Committee have both unanimously voted in favor of our contract. We respectfully request that tonight this Honorable Board approve that three-year contract to Bartis Russell Broadcasting TV. Thank you.
Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Unfinished Business O-2211. I was interested in, hopefully in the discussion tonight, hearing a little bit about why we are rezoning and doing mixed overlay in that district. And I'm in part wondering if it's, if some of that isn't impacted by the development work that's going on with Corvo Ruthier and Henry Hanger, which was approved several years ago, but nothing has happened over there yet, and I was trying to figure out if we're trying to work parking issues, I don't know. But there's a correspondence you were given tonight that I would like to get a copy of so that I could read what the report is on that. Also regarding the TV station, you know, I would like to see policy set up, more clear policy set up to make certain that the programming is balanced and fair. I've seen this city be pretty politically motivated, and I just don't want to see the station become used in a way that would allow that to happen. I'm particularly concerned about elected boards getting public access, regular channel time. I think the government channel is for those elected boards, and that the public access channel should be for everyone. I wouldn't want to see during political season and campaign season candidates be given the public access channel and having candidates who are already elected into board seats having more access than other people. And I think that has to be regulated through policy. And I would like to say the concerns that people have had who have existing shows, I understand why those concerns exist. I'm very happy to hear tonight that those programs will continue, but I think part of the reason this has been a big hole is that there hasn't been a meeting of that cable advisory board for two months, which is very unusual. I mean, last year, they had maybe nine meetings by May, this year, they had four. So it's been very quiet with no meetings or public input, so nobody could ask those questions or get information. And I hope the meetings start again.
One minute.
So that the interested people can, can come out and ask their questions and get their answers. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Lou Juris.
Good evening, Lou Juris here from 56 Hain Street. In reference to the food service contract, I'd like to advocate for acceptance and approval of it. The, the food service, as well as the custodians and other people in the school buildings, are heroes. They've kept the operations of the schools going, and certainly with the food service, very vital during these times, during the summertime, during, of course, times of pandemic. They kept the, they kept the food prepared and got it out the door, and students were able to either get it delivered, picked up, and I know for us, too, it was, it was a nice option to have, my daughter would come home with the, with the lunch, and it was, it was very good. And I told her to eat the whole thing, because if she didn't, I would eat it. So it was, you know, it was helpful, and they, they do deserve the renewal of the contract, and hopefully the school, school, school department can bring in some new recruits for, for those positions as well to bolster up the forces. That, that's my main focus tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else, so we're gonna move on. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Jeffrey L. Snow, Superintendent of Edgewood Cemetery, regarding request for joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and schedule a joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees for Tuesday, June 14, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchus regarding a multi-year contract award for public access television operations and management.
Alderman Jettie.
So I move to accept, place on file, and award the contract for the management, operation, and coordination of the CTV studio and channel 96 to BRB TV LLC in an amount not to exceed $506,800 for a three-year total. Funding through Department Community Television Fund 55699, other contracted services, PEG Access Channels Special Revenue Fund, and I'd like to speak on that.
Alderman Jettie.
So for those who, who aren't aware, the, the city operates three public channels. One is the government channel, that's Channel 16, that those of you who are watching tonight, where you're on 16. There's also Channel 99, which is the education channel, which broadcasts the school department meetings and the sports, the school sports and other educational topics. And then there's Channel 96, which is the public access channel. Public access channel provides public access. It's an opportunity for the public to produce and broadcast TV shows at studios on Riverside Drive and through Channel 96. It's also available by live stream on the internet from the city website, and also they replay through YouTube various programs. So what we're talking about tonight is the contract to operate that public access channel. And I think Director Kleiner is, is on Zoom, I hope, to provide the history of what got us here tonight. Are you there, Director Kleiner?
She is. Did you have some questions for her?
Yes, could you, could you, through you, Madam President?
Yes.
Could she please explain the history of how we ended up at this, with this contract tonight?
Okay. Director Kleiner?
Good evening, members of the board. I'm happy to give a little bit of explanation. There was quite a bit of discussion at the Finance Committee. Chairman Andrew Sanata and I addressed them about a week ago. So the original RFP was over 10 years old. The existing contractor had approached the city last fall, asking us to significantly change the agreement, and because those changes would significantly impact the contract and change the work and the scope, we discussed with purchasing if it was, if it was best practice to go out for an RFP, and we were told that it is. Because of the time period that had elapsed, because there were significant changes that were being suggested, we did just that. And the committee some time ago did change the CTAB committee from meeting monthly to meeting quarterly. During the RFP process, we have met more than quarterly. We did post about the RFP, we had a very public process, and we had two bidders that approached the city, the existing contractor, CMSG, and Bartis Russell Broadcasting TV. After a very lengthy process, including interviews, including discussion and public comment, at a CTAB Advisory Committee meeting, the CTAB Committee unanimously voted for Bartis Russell Broadcasting. That contract has been reviewed by all the necessary city staff, and it was brought to finance and approved last Wednesday evening.
Thank you, Director Kleiner. You all said Alderman Jettie?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion before us is to accept, place on file, and award the contract for the management, operation, and coordination of the CTV studio on Channel 96 to VRB TV LLC in an amount not to exceed $506,800 for a three-year total. That's the motion. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, Alderman Wiltshire. Through you to Director Kleiner, I just was interested in addressing the question from the, from the public comment around transition and whether that was, you know, talk through and, and that, you know, everyone at cable television is feeling comfortable with how that will, will go.
Director Kleiner?
Certainly. So Bartis Russell Broadcasting has been in conversations with CMSG. They do, Bartis Russell Broadcasting intends to continue programming as is. They would also like to work with CMSG, who has been more than helpful in talking about the transition and them working together and what it will take to maintain the station as is until a proper transition can take place.
Thank you, Director Kleiner. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I want to make a couple of comments here. After the, the last meeting that we had where this was presented and so on, I believe someone had made a comment about transition and that it wasn't going to happen until September. And so I spoke to Mr. Russell himself, and he said, no, that he didn't understand how that miscommunication had happened, that they plan on taking over right when, at the beginning, and that there will be a crossover of the two contracts, and Director Kleiner can correct me if I'm wrong, but that there would be a crossover of the two contracts. He actually told me that he had spoken to some that worked there and offered them positions. I have no idea who said what, so I, I'm not gonna comment any further on that. So they are trying to make a smooth transition. The other thing I wanted to make comment of, and, and a few times it's been stated that no elected official should be on that, that channel and so on. There's already elected officials on that channel, as well as history of past elected officials, why they were still in office on that channel and so on. I'm not gonna comment as to what their content was, it's free speech, they can say what they want as long as it's within the legal limits and so on. So I don't think anybody should be barred from having any type of show just because they're holding an elected office. And I just want to make that, that very clear, that that has already happened, there's a history of it, there are currently people that are doing the show now, shows now that are of elected office. And Director Kleiner, if I'm inaccurate, they are gonna cross over for a few months, we'll kind of be paying like a double contractor in that time, is that not correct?
Director Kleiner?
It is correct that there will be some crossover of people working within the station for the transition. It is not necessarily going to be the double charge. We are currently working that out when the new contract will begin, although they will be actively over, looking over the station and working with CMSG for the transition period. But we are working that out. We did not request additional funding to handle a double impact fiscally.
May I have this one? Thank you. I, I commented to that mostly because of the letter that we had received from the, the legal counsel of the current contractor, so I apologize if I misspoke on, on that. And again, I did speak to Mr. Russell, who said that he wanted to make that transition as smooth as possible, and that the comment in the letter that we had received would say that there was gonna be no re-airing of any programming, and he said that that was not true either, that they were guaranteeing X number of, of re-airings so that people could watch it on a different day or a different time zone. So they really are going to try to work, especially to keep everybody happy, but they want to add new programming of a variety of different types of things so that the, the community can really be taken in with this public access TV and so on. So I was quite excited to hear him speak. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Whenever we change anything, it comes with the usual concerns, and in this particular change of contract at BRB TV, I, I can understand it, and we did hear from several members from the public. But I'm gonna support this measure, but I will ask Director Kleiner and our liaison to the Cable TV Board to watch this particular transition, and if there's any difficulties, please bring it forward to the full board. And I think, I know quite well, Director Kleiner, and our liaison will do the due diligence as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan.
A brief question to Director Kleiner, if I may.
You may.
It's my understanding that the folks that are going to transition into management of the, of the television station operate a for-profit radio group. Is, is the intention that this will remain public access, nonprofit, no selling of ads, anything like that?
Director Kleiner?
Yes, that is the intention. That was made perfectly clear, and BRB TV is a separate entity than the radio station.
Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
This was brought to my attention pretty early on with the CTAB as well, so I talked to several members of the CTAB, I talked to several stakeholders of the community. As Alderman O'Brien mentioned, it is a chain, so I was, I asked myself the question, should I be concerned? And I know that Barton and Russell run a radio show that is very popular in Nashua. It's been growing with a tremendous amount of new content that's really spoken highly of by, by members of the community in, in my neighborhoods. And I think my understanding from speaking to CTAB members and, and understanding exactly why we were changing things in the first place, is because there is a need for more access, or forgive the pun, to public access, and a revitalization is in order. And if what we've seen at WSMN is any kind of indication, I think this is something we should be excited about. I do recognize that they also took the legal steps of creating a separate company so that they can devote those resources specifically to the model that we're looking for. I also like the BRB initials, I'm assuming that's an intentional pun. I think they have the expertise to do this. I think we've been treated well in the past by Access Nashua and the people who work there, not for making their riches or getting their star on Hollywood, but because they believe in the community and enjoy working with them, and I hope to see that continue in whatever form it's possible to continue to be.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. Just would like to jump on to what Alderman O'Brien said and just ask more formally if the, if Director Kleiner and BRB TV would be willing to just give us an update in the fall. I, I really am interested to hear some of the new stuff that they're going to be doing. So, you know, an informal presentation to the board in the fall, I think, would be in order.
Would you be amenable to that, Director Kleiner?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Goveya?
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is very exciting for public access TV in our city. Having known Mr. Bardas and Mr. Russell for some time prior to serving on the board and dealing with them in more professional matters as their business at WSMN, I think they're ready for the challenge and talking to them extensively. I think they have a great plan and a good foresight on what could be great for our community. So I look forward to supporting it, and I hope my colleagues do as well.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding a multi-year contract award for generator maintenance for the energy recovery facility.
Alderman Clay?
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to approve the energy recovery generator three-year maintenance contract with Southworth Milton Incorporated, Milton Cat, Milford, Massachusetts, in an amount not to exceed Funding will be through Department 169 Waste Water Fund, Waste Water Account Classification, 54 Property Services, MoSh, oh, sorry. I don't need to see the rest. Thank you.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award for engineering consulting at the Nashua landfill.
Alderman Camo?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve a three-year contract for general engineering services for the city of Nashua's landfills covering fiscal year '23 through fiscal year '25 at an annual cost not to exceed $220,000 to Sanborn Head and Associates of Concord, New Hampshire, pending approval of the fiscal year '23 operating budget. The term of this contract will be from July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, Solid Waste Account Classification, 53 Professional and Technical Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding a multi-year contract award for cybersecurity software license and maintenance.
Alderman Goveya?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve place on file and award the four-year contract for the next component to enhance the city's cybersecurity arsenal to Continental Resources, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $282,054. Funding will be through Department 122 Information Technology Fund, 54407. Software maintenance, $270,302, and 71228 Computer Software, $11,752 through general fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to speak to this motion in that seeing as I'm in this business, and I'm delighted to see this motion come before this board because of the fact that in the news you're hearing constantly, if not within the last 60 days, six states were compromised by foreign actors. And I think it's very, very important that we shore up our website and whatnot because of the constant attacks that are happening in states. And just because we're a small town in New Hampshire, do not think it will not happen because there's a lot of financial information. And all those people need is one door in to connect it to another door, to connect it to another door, and before you know it, this whole city could be shut down for weeks. So I'm excited to see that that's in here, and I give it my full endorsement.
Thank you. Alderman Clay?
Thank you, Madam President. I 100% agree with what the Alderman to my left has stated. And we have seen towns in the city, in the state of New Hampshire where this has happened, where they have been held hostage, so to speak. And for the, you know, the grace of God, it has not happened here in Nashua. And we pray that it never does happen, but doing everything we possibly can is the most important thing. And I think Mr. Mysvich spoke to this, and it is important, along with the other software of testing all of us in email and so on and the challenges. I think that we're running down the right road, so thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, regarding ARPA funding framework.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication as read and refer it to the Human Affairs Committee. Petitions?
There is none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Appointments by the mayor. To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Joseph Ulfritz, 35 Newberry Street, Nashua; Deanna Hoing of 361 Woodford Street, Manchester; and Laura Spira Savet, 39 Coburn Avenue, Nashua, to the Nashua Arts Commission, offer terms to expire May 31, 2025; and Claudia Decker of 59 Robinson Road, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire May 24, 2025, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
I'll accept the nominations as presented by the mayor and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
Madam President, just a point of order. Claudia Decker's address is listed as Hudson, New Hampshire, on our agenda.
She'll check on that.
Thanks.
Reports of committees, there being no objection. I will declare the reports of the March 30th and March 31st, 2022 Task Force be accepted and placed on file. Excuse me. There being no objec-- okay, let me read in here. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the March 30th and March 31st Joint Meeting of the Committee on Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 11th, 2022 Special Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. Excuse me. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of a budget review committee held last evening, meeting held last evening regarding proposed resolution R. 22032. Alderman Dowd?
Yes, thank you, President Wiltshire. Last night, we had CEO Dan Donovan from the School Department here. He explained the contract in detail. This is self-funding by sales of lunches, so there's no impact to the overall city budget. And also, the last two years, the federal government has paid for all the lunches. So the account that has the monies in it to pay this contract is very well off at the current time. And if there are any other questions people have, I'll be happy to answer them, but it was passed unanimously at the Budget Committee.
Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
There is none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of resolution R. 2232, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua Teachers Union, local 1044 AFT/AFL-CIO Unit D Food Service Workers from September 1st of 2021 through August 31st of 2024.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 22032.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Oh, sorry, unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance O. 2211, amending the zoning map by rezoning land situated north and south of Lake Street and west of Pine Street from local business LB to local business with mixed-use overlay district LBMU.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion for final passage of O-22-011. And I would ask if Alderman Camo could speak on it since it is his--
Alderman Camo?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Alderman Moran. This parcel of land is a small piece of land at the intersection of Lake and Pine. Most people that have driven past it will recognize it as a small portion of it is known as the Lake Street Garage. The rest of it is a vacant dirt lot that is currently collecting trash and has not been in use for at least 15 years. This rezoning would allow discussions to be held for potential redevelopment of that land. There's no specific plan at this time. This is just to rezone it to allow those conversations to happen. It also happens to be the only, one of the only pieces of land left in that neighborhood that is not currently zoned to allow residential is an LB zone, one of the last ones in the area. As far as why we would do a mixed-use overlay, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that allows for the greatest flexibility as far as what could be developed on there, which is a conversation to happen at a later time. And with respect to a question that was asked earlier, I don't believe that this has anything to do with whatever development is or is not happening at the Henry Hanger Building. This is a completely independent conversation. And given the vacancy of that lot for quite some time, I would be excited to see just about anything go in there. So I'm happy that this is going to go forward. It also unanimously passed through the Planning Board, and the PEDC also gave it a favorable recommendation unanimously. So I look forward to voting on it, and I hope that everyone does as well.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. As a neighbor of this, I live down the street on Ash Street. I can tell you that I am in full agreement with Alderman Camo on this. I think it's a good idea to rezone this and see what we can potentially do with that piece of property. I think this gives it the most flexibility of what can go in there. And, you know, it's a starting point to have those discussions. So I'm very, I was very happy to see this go forward and to co-sponsor it.
Anyone else? Motion is for final passage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Resolution 2232 is declared duly adopted. Nope, nope, sorry. Ordinance 22011 is declared duly adopted. Sorry about that. New business resolutions?
First reading of resolution R. 2236, authorizing Penachuk Corporation to renew and extend its line of credit with TD Bank, N.A.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Moran, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Penachuk Board of Special Committee.
First reading of resolution R. 2237, relative to the acceptance of $1,031,630 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into various public health and community services grant activities.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clay, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of resolution R. 2238, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2,450,000 for Walnut Street Oval Intersection Project and West Pearl Street Streetscaping.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Goveya, Alderman Cathy, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen meeting, public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 27, 2022. New business ordinances?
First reading of ordinance O. 2218, amending Aldermanic Joint Committees.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Clay, Alderman Camo, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for public, general public comment. Please, you have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record before you get into your comments.
De Museoli, 6, sorry, I'm short. 6 Midhurst. So I understand that probably each and every one of you got the packet that I sent regarding the golf disc at Robey Park, which I am 1,000% against. I started a petition online. We have 252 supporters, and every day we're getting more and more supporters. I stood out on Spitbrook Road with this big sign yesterday. I got a lot of approval. I got a lot of people that were shocked that this disc golf course was approved to get put in there. And I don't think that information is flowing to the public. I don't think it's flowing at all. I did file a complaint with the State of New Hampshire Division of Environmental Services. I am waiting to get that result back. I've noticed the construction has stopped. I have evidence that the critical wetlands in that area have been disrupted by downing of trees. And they, I'm not sure what happened, but as soon as I announced it on social media that I had filed that complaint, all of a sudden hay went up and these big tubes to try to prevent soil erosion. People, this is a critical wetland for a diverse population of wildlife. It has to be maintained, and you have to protect it against soil erosion. It's not happening. The measures that they currently have in place today, if you walked it today, according to the state, these are temporary measures. The trees need to be replanted. Shrubbery needs to go in. Something needs to happen to keep that critical wetland in the health that it needs to be kept in. I haven't heard back. I've heard back from a few Aldermen, nothing. No information's being exchanged back and forth. I am asking again that mayor to hold the special meeting. I'm asking each and every one of you to support that request.
One minute.
And I'm asking for a Robey Park Advisory Committee to be put into place to figure out what we're going to do with that area, because it cannot be allowed to continue. And you cannot cut, you cannot interrupt wetland like they're doing right now. Thank you for your time.
Now, the next speaker, I can't read the name, but it's 6 Midhurst. I can't read the name at all.
Tom O'Brien, 6 Midhurst, 4. I abut Robey Park like most abutters. I was shocked to learn about the 18-hole disc golf course going in. I oppose this project for many reasons, one of which is the available parking that currently only support what Robey Park was meant to be, a small neighborhood ballpark and playground. sorry. Alderman Cleaver and the mayor and Nashua Police Department were made aware of safety hazards related to overflow parking. Nothing was done to alleviate this hazard. People entering and exiting the school, church, and condo complexes around Spitbrook Road from Robey Park to just shy of Spitbrook Road Fire Department during weekend events at Robey. You cannot see cars oncoming, and they can't see you. You take your chances going out into the road. You just have to pray you don't get T-boned because you cannot see. I have a photo here that shows-- there are no lights at any of the exits and entrances in this area. There have been many accidents at Oak Hill Intersection with Spitbrook Road. I'm told this golf tournaments can have hundreds of players, not including spectators and support staff. Where are they going to park? How is Robey Park going to support that? That's a, that's a problem that the city needs to address now. You could put a traffic light at Oak Hill and Spitbrook Road.
One minute.
No parking on either side of Spitbrook Road. Police detail for lodge events. But the best thing for us would be to move the golf disc to another location altogether. I hope you listen to me, and thank you for your time. And here's the picture if anyone would like to see it.
Beth Skare?
Hi, Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. My remarks are to Alderman Moran. After I gave my public comment at May 10th Board of Aldermen's meeting about my delight that the mayor and the city of Nashua admitted it was wrong to have my Saban Sports flag removed from the citizen flagpole, I was prepared for sharp remarks. Criticism of my flag as well-- Criticism of my flag is well welcome because it keeps the dialogue going about what should be done, about the issue of men competing in women's sports, and because freedom of speech is a right that I, and I assume all of you, hold dearly. If no one criticized my flag, I would have no opportunity to defend it. I was shocked, Alderman Moran, when you weren't beyond criticizing my flag into a personal attack, calling me out by name and saying that I lock arms with the Satanic Temple. You, the person with power, disparaged me, the person without power, to your friends and colleagues, and did it in front of me, but you spoke as if I weren't there in the room with all of you and with the residents of Nashua watching from home. You used the classic bullying tactic, singling me out, making false accusations against me, humiliating me, encouraging others to turn against me. I would compare it to middle school, except this is the real world and canceling people has much more dire consequences. And you violated the board's code of conduct and all the members of this board that were in attendance also violated when they did not speak up about your violation. You may say your attack on me was justified because my message is an attack on LGBTQ people. If that is so, then why do Martina Navratilova and Caitlyn Jenner, two of the most famous LGBTQ people in the world, support the cause of saving women's sport? It is because as former elite athletes, they know better than anyone what a disadvantaged woman are at in physical competitions against men. Last year, Martina retweeted this statement. The reputation of the gay rights movement is tarnished when activists that claim to represent us deny biological reality and undermine the sporting chance of girls and women. When you make a personal attack on me because of my message of saving women's sports, you may score points with the powerful and connected of the city, and you may believe you are being virtuous in speaking up for vulnerable people, but you are in fact piling on and helping to cause serious harm to girls, women, who only want to compete on the play level, level playing field. Thanks.
Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. A couple of things. The Robie Park Advisory Committee, I think is a great idea and maybe we need something broader as a committee to cover all of our parks. The parking issue is real. I called several disc golf courses and asked them when they have tournaments, how many cars come in, and they said well over 100. And that on any weekend with people practicing at a popular course or a well-done course, and I think this will be well done, 30 to 40 cars will be there on a weekend. So we got to address that. We put it on the back burner. You know, one of the courses I called in Massachusetts, they use a field, but we've only got the sledding hill, which is not ideal next to that course, that sloped hill for sledding. And I don't think that makes an ideal parking lot. So the parking issue should have been addressed. Disappointed that there wasn't more community outreach, particularly because we have a PR person. With regard to the Save Women's Sports flag, you know, I emailed every board member immediately within 30 seconds of those comments being made because I felt they were so out of line. And I do think the board as a whole has to be quicker on calling points of order. That is in violation of your board code. And it offends me too. Alderman Moran might as well say that I lock my arm with Satan, and I don't. I just happen to think that there are plenty Democrats and Republicans and people of all associations that share, you know, common view on that flag. And it got politicized and inappropriately categorized by the mayor. And I did mention at a meeting you weren't at that I spoke to a very prominent Democratic attorney, big-time Democrat constitutionalist lawyer, had a lengthy talk about that flag, and their comment to me was, that is not an LBGQ flag or a hater flag at all. That's not the message of that flag. So I know it's your viewpoint, but, you know, try to think about those of us that don't really think it's the viewpoint and it's just our viewpoint. Want to switch over to assessing. There's some questions that have been popping up on elderly exemptions. You know, the MS1 is a great place to go for you new board members to get the data. Dive into the MS1. 2018, we had $132 million for elderly exemptions. 2021, we have $137 million for elderly exemptions, roughly 778 granted. Please pay attention to that tomorrow when the budget meeting is going on. Please ask about those exemptions and how that money is going to be funded so we don't have a shortfall. Also, the mayor made a comment that the tax rate can't be, you know, really calculated until November or when the bills go out. You can have a number in September. And John Griffin is more than capable of giving you a number in September. And please, as a board, encourage him to give you that number so you can let your words know. Thank you.
William Dolan.
William Dolan, 12 Petarius Drive. I'm here to speak in support of Alderman Moran, actually about this flag issue. One, to be fair, as terms of the substance, the Satanic Temple is attempting to raise their flag above the Boston City Hall. That is a fact. But this is not about flags. Watching this meeting, I have noticed that these meetings are based in the community. We heard about generator maintenance, public access, kids lunches. I applaud the smooth running of this city. And I think because of these meetings that we have and because they're grounded in local important issues, that it's easy to ignore rhetoric that is not grounded in important local issues. However, someone needs to call out hate when they see it. Let's be clear, this is not about freedom of speech or religious freedom. We know it isn't because when addressed with logic and reason, some people clutch their pearls. They claim victimhood when they get called off for cloaking hate. When they are confronted with logic and reason, it exposes their hypocrisy. It shines a light to their true intent, desire to spread hate in this city. I applaud Alderman Moran for calling out hate. Nashville is a welcoming city. Let's not slip in an attitude that ignores hate. Don't be moved by false narratives. To put in terms that they can understand, they are false prophets. Thank you very much.
Next on Zoom, we have Scott. Name and address for the record, please, Scott.
49 Congress Street, 49 Congress Street, apartment six. Like to talk about the Best Buddies Friendship Walk. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott McCullough. I got some exciting event for you, the Best Buddies Friendship Walk. There's going to be, there's going to be, at the State Grounds in Conquering, New Hampshire, Fun Zone. Music, games, food, and you can scan that little code right there on, whoops. Right there, that is my picture, actually. You can scan that code and make a donation. I greatly appreciate any donation that you guys can help me out with. And I will probably be coming by the chamber with a thank you. Probably when, uh, when you guys have your meeting, I'm going to bring a, a thank you picture and a, and a picture for the mayor for best buddies in his support of best buddies. I'd like to say thank you, Mayor, I'd like to say thank you, Mayor Jim Doncus, and thank you to, uh, Thomas Earl, the guy who keeps, who's mentioning about the Best Buddies Friendship Walk, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Nancy Simons. You're on mute, Nancy.
Okay, better.
Yes.
I have to say that I respect.
We need your name and address for the record, please.
Nancy Simons, 37 Congress Street, apartment one. I respect, I listened to the meeting where they, they had the comments about the flag. And I didn't find Alderman Moran to be disrespectful, to be rude. I found that he appreciated, he got information from his constituents and he listened to them. I find him to be very professional. And the fact that he supports the LGBT community, he supports small businesses. I didn't find anything that he said to be condescending, to be rude. I'm basically kind of appalled at those two women that were slinking these insults at him because I, I saw the meeting and I listened to everything that was said. And I'm in support of Alderman Moran. I, like I said, I respect him. I find him to be very professional. I'm, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lisa Moran.
Hi, Lisa Moran, 30 Diggerman Street. I just want to start out with, I am not speaking on behalf of my husband in any way. He speaks very well for himself. I did want to thank him though, and Alderman Tebow and Mayor Doncus for their comments at last week's Board of Aldermen meeting, supporting and defending the LGBTQ plus community by flying the pride, the pride flag next month for Pride Month. Instead of the hateful transphobic flag that was, well, not to be flown. I was also going to touch on free speech, but I feel a previous speaker was much more articulate and said, said it way better than I could. So I'm speaking as a concerned resident and a sponsor for the Nashville Pride Parade. I'm concerned about this citizen potentially disrupting the event. And I will be marching in it with my husband, my company, my children. She's disrupted coffee with the mayor at Jaja Bell's, and I just don't know if there is anyone on the Board of Aldermen who could point me in the right direction of who could I have a conversation with? Is there anything to, to, to prevent any disruptions so that everyone can feel safe at this event to celebrate love and acceptance and support? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anyone else with their hand up for public comments, so we're going to move on. Remarks by members of the board. I'll start over here. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few things to say. The first thing, and I'm sure a lot of us will, will probably have comment on this too, it would be remiss, remiss if I didn't mention what Mr. Marku did earlier and the tragedy in Texas today at the school. You know, it's horrible to see this. It's not just at schools, but obviously our schools, you know, with our children are most precious. You know, and there's going to be lots of people praying and issuing out false comments out there, but at the end of the day, there's, there's two things that, that would help. Gun control of some sort, and then at the end of the day, mental health awareness. And I think as a city, we can't do much about guns, but we can continue to work on mental health in the city and make sure that these type of things don't happen in our community because they can happen anywhere. It doesn't matter what kind of size school it can happen, so. Second, I, I just want to thank Donna Graham. I know she does a lot of work and she's been doing a lot of work by herself and I appreciate that some of those meetings we had when we talked about barriers are very, very, very long to transcribe, so I just want to thank her for that. I know it's, it's long hours, so I want to thank her for all her work doing that. Again, I would also be remiss if I didn't support Alderman Large Moran. You know, I, I didn't think his comments were out of line. You know, I'm pro-choice, but I don't think I should fly a pro-choice flag in City Hall because it's going to alienate people. And if I wanted to do it, I'd do it in my house, right? I don't want to alienate people in the city. Whether or not it's intentional to be transphobic, there's a perception from trans people and LGBTQ people that it is that way. So why would we try to do that? If you want to do that, stand on a street corner, fly it at your house. I'm never going to stop somebody's right to say, stop, you know, Save Women's Sports or any of that stuff. They can do it. But I just don't think as Nashua's a community, we should put something up there that's going to alienate people, especially when they think it might be hateful. Lastly, so a citizen came to me from the Mayor Orell Senior Citizen Complex over on Pine and Lake, over at Ward Six. Sandy Pond is becoming very, filled with trash, I guess, for a better word. And it's, so I went over there. I took a look at it and when I was over there, I saw a giant frog, two turtles on a log, and a duck nesting on a beaver, a muskrat dam. And a lot of trash, whiskey bottles, beer bottles, just food wrappers, a kickball of some sort. And it was disgusting. And Sandy Pond looked like a pretty nice pond. And I thought, I, I had to go somewhere to help and I asked, I reached out to a lot of people and including the mayor's office. And I think it's Celia in the mayor's office appointed me to National Housing, a correct email for them. So I emailed them. I also went, and this is why I'm telling the story, because I want to thank a couple of people that helped me with this. I went to Alderman Clea and she was able to point me in the direction of Deb Chisholm. So I want to thank both of them. Deb Chisholm got a community and maybe Alderman Clea, when it gets around to her, can explain this a little better, but a group of people that, that kayak in some of these waterways and they pick up trash. And they pulled four bags of trash out of Sandy Pond. And some of the complaint from the citizen was that people are using that senior housing in the back by where Sandy Pond is. There's drug use, there's drinking use. Also across from the pond, there's a little park and people are going there late at night and partying. So a couple of things that were done is unfortunately Sandy Pond, part of it's in National Housing's purview. It's not necessarily full city. So like I said, they pulled four bags of trash. The police al- also said that they would try to go over there and do more run-throughs to try to break up some of that. But the four bags was helpful. Now, the kayaks couldn't get into all the reeds, so there's still a lot of trash in there. And I'm hoping that National Housing can go in there and maybe help dig out the rest of the trash. So I thank Alderman Clea, and I thank Deb Chisholm for helping us get that done. I was really appreciative and that citizen and all the senior citizens at that, that apartment complex in Ward Six were, were appreciative, so thank you.
Alderman Tebow, being the liaison to the housing authority, I will address this with them as well.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Cathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to say that I'm happy to see Joseph Olef Forwitz. I apologize if I mispronounced your last name. It's a tricky one. Being on the Arts Committee, right? I think that he's in my ward. I've talked to him a lot. He has a lot of interest in the, in the PAC, a lot of industry knowledge, so I think he's going to bring a lot to the table about how to best utilize that space and how we can really get all of our money's worth out of that particular space. I wasn't really going to address this tonight, but it cropped up. Regarding the flag issue, I am what some call a free speech absolutist. You can say what you want to say out in the open, in the public square. I believe that's where it should be said, and then those ideas can be debated and talked about, and the best ones will always rise to the top based on Enlightenment philosophies, logic, reason, scripture, if you're a Christian like I am. So I, I don't necessarily have a problem. I don't agree sometimes with what's said or how it's said or saying things to the public because we are elected officials, but as far as the nature of saying what you want to say, I believe that you can say what you want to say, should you, up for debate. I don't agree with the comments, but I don't necessarily have some sort of like penchant against them. I, I don't believe the Aldermanic Chamber is necessarily the place to hash out those things either because we have professional business to do. And so I much prefer to do those things one-on-one if need be and because then it's just a, it's going to just go back and forth tit for tat, and I don't know if that's very productive. As far as the code of conduct goes, I don't really know how that works. Kind of new to the game. I don't know how it applies. I don't know, you know, a lot of those terms could be used vaguely. You could put free speech on them, so I, I don't know how that all works. So I, I can't really comment on whether it should be applied or not applied. The last comment I'll make is about disc golf. Yeah, there's been a lot of questions about disc golf. Right now, from my understanding, the project is on hold pending the Conservation Commission coming in and looking at the wetlands, and then there'll be a process after that to rectify any issues that need to be addressed. And so I think the reason that there hasn't been a lot of communication is we're in that process. We're trying to figure out what's going on, next steps. We have to get a report from the Conservation Commission. We have to find out what's going on and then they, we have, you know, we have to go through the process of figuring out next steps to figure out fixing the wetlands if indeed they are damaged. So it's going to take a little while. It's going to be probably a slow trickle until we figure out where we're at and what we need to do next. So I would just urge patience on both sides. It doesn't need to be a very heated issue. It's, it's going to take some time. I know people want a public hearing. I don't know that I'm necessarily in favor of a public hearing only because the board I don't know that I'm necessarily in favor of a public hearing, only because the Board of Public Works is a separate board. They're a separate government entity, and for us to come in behind them and say, "You didn't do something right, and now we're going to hold a public hearing," we're usurping their authority and saying, "You didn't do what you're supposed to do, so now we're going to do it." And I don't necessarily think that that is best for government practice and how we get things done. So I wouldn't expect a public hearing to come from this board. Certainly, we could talk to the Board of Public Works, but again, I'm uncomfortable with that. I think let's just slow down, take a beat, figure out what next steps are, and then we can figure out if public comment or hearings need to be had. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one quick thing, just really happy to announce finally that we have kind of started off a project in Ward 1 Nashville. I want to thank Andrew Moran, who's the Executive Director of the Regenerative Grassroots Project. We're looking to take the old Navajo Baseball Park and turn it into a community farm. I think it would be great for the ward. We've gotten a lot of good response from the surrounding area so far, but we've been out in the neighborhoods talking to the neighbors in the surrounding area, and it sounds like it'll be something positive. So we look forward to keeping that project going and updating everybody as it goes along. Thank you.
Alderman Deb.
Just a couple of things. One, we've commenced work on the new intersection outside the Penetrauk Middle School. The work will be going on between now and should be completed by, hopefully, the first of July. So there will be traffic interruptions because we're going to be digging up the asphalt, putting down new base and new tar. There'll be turning lanes and travel lanes, so traffic flow through there after it's done will be much, much, much smoother, and all the new traffic lights will be installed. So we're hoping that that will be done by around the first of July, but the work will be done between now and then. The second item is after June 23rd, the Penetrauk Middle School entire campus, including the athletic fields, will be closed until school starts because of the extensive amount of work we'll be doing this summer, including around the athletic field. So with the heavy equipment involved and everything, it's not safe for people to be on-site, so the site will be closed. There will be an electronic sign going up soon to announce that, so that people will be aware of it, and things are moving along quite well at Penetrauk Middle School Project, so everything's good. And we're also moving along very well and ahead of schedule on the new middle school.
Alderman Kamal.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just had a couple of really quick things. First, I would like to thank my colleague from Ward 8 for crossing over the turnpike and helping out over at Sandy Pond. That is one of the few things that I hadn't heard anything about, so just a reminder to anybody in the ward that if they have concerns, they can bring those to me. The thing that I have been hearing the most about recently, as a segue, is the traffic around Bishop Gerton High School. I've been working with city engineer and traffic engineer. One of the things that they are going to implement close to immediately is adjusting the timing on the light during dismissal times. It will hopefully allow the students and parents leaving BG to get out quicker so that they don't have to or choose to bypass the light by zooming through the neighborhoods. We're hoping that that is going to be enough to rectify that situation. If it is not, we will look into additional measures that we might be able to take, but the hope is that that will be enough. So I'd ask those of you that have reached out to me about that, please be patient. Let's see what effect that has, if any. Also, I would just like to echo some earlier comments. I wish, I offer my thoughts and prayers to those in Texas. It's a terrible, terrible tragedy that I hope no one ever has to experience, and it just breaks my heart. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
I have a few points. Thank you. I'm going to start, I wasn't going to speak on this, but I do want to just quickly, for a beat, recognize the tragedy in Texas. See if I can get this out without crying. I'm a mom. I have a daughter who's the same age as the kids that were gunned down today, and my nephew was two blocks from the Buffalo tragedy two weeks ago. I just feel that as a country, we need to say no more, and we can't continue to offer our thoughts and prayers and no action. Okay. Something a little less heavy. I just wanted to thank, I believe his name is Scott, who's come on so many times talking about Best Buddies. He's just got such an effervescence for life, and I'm going to come and do the walk. I'm really excited to walk with him, and I just wanted to say that Best Buddies is so very lucky to have him spreading the word and sharing, you know, how much joy he has for them. So appreciate him coming, and I hope he keeps coming right up until then. My last piece, I want to address, you know, who we are as a city in terms of being a welcoming city. That is something that we talk about a lot. It is something that we, as leaders, I am very proud of, and I hope that everyone in the city is proud of. So that means we welcome immigrants, we welcome rich, poor, old, young LGBTQ, and that also means that we want our community members to feel welcome and loved. I believe Alderman Moran expressed that this flag was the opposite effect for many in the city, and I heard that from other people other than him. And I think while he was passionate, he was not out of line on that, and if members of the public are allowed to share their viewpoints respectfully in terms of free speech, then as Aldermen, we should have the same privilege. That brings me to National Pride. I always love to make sure that people know that that's coming up. We're just about a month out. Really excited for being able to be in person. So that's Saturday, June 25th, from 2:00 to 6:00. Right now, the Pride shop is open, so if you go to nationalpride.org, you want to get a t-shirt, we've got hats, our yard signs, you can get them. We tried to do it earlier this year, so you can have them for the whole month of Pride. So be sure to get your orders in by March 31st. We will have some available at the festival, but if you want to wear it beforehand...
May.
May. My brain is scrambled. March 31st, two months ago. May 31st, thank you. I think that's all I have. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I, like everyone else, am struggling with what happened in Texas today. My wife's a teacher, and earlier today, she texted me because one of her students, it was accidental, but whacked her in the face and actually split her lip. And it was, he was acting out, and, you know, it wasn't intentional on his part, but, you know, that was earlier in the day, and then you hear this. And it kind of brings it home to you that, you know, we're one crazy person away from that happening. And, you know, I've always been a proponent of the Second Amendment. I believe in the right to bear arms, but, you know, I've also always said that there has to be limitations. There has to be regulations. We regulate everybody, everything else in this country. We had a debate here once about whether or not we were going to allow people who were 20 years old to buy a cigarette or not. I mean, and right now, if you're 18, without a criminal record, you can go and buy an assault weapon. I think it's crazy. I think it's out of control. And the fact that Congress, and not everyone in Congress, but the fact that a good majority, half of Congress, refuses to have a discussion or refuses to move forward any kind of comprehensive gun control or background checks, universal background checks, why is it so hard? Why is it that we are so against moving forward a background check? Why? We're protecting criminals? You have a criminal record? We're going to protect you so that you can bypass a gun check? Really? That's what you're defending? I mean, to me, it's insane. It's insane. There are small things that we can do to make it harder for these things to happen. I'm not saying that these things are going to be prevented, that these tragedies aren't going to continue to happen, and that criminals aren't going to be able to find a way to get a weapon. They are, but there's things that government can do and government should do, and they should nationalize and standardize these things so that one guy who's living in New York can go over to Pennsylvania, buy a weapon, bring it back to New York, and slaughter a bunch of people in a grocery store. Because he's crazy, because he thinks that somehow there's this replacement theory out there. There's things we can do as a country, and if we don't start demanding our congressmen, whether they're Republican, Democrat, Independent, Libertarian, if we don't start demanding our congressmen and our senators to do something, these tragedies will continue to happen. Congress needs to act, and we, as local elected officials, need to start speaking up and demanding on behalf of our own citizens who elect us, to start doing something. Because I'll tell you what, the next candidate for office who comes to me to ask for a donation, my response to them is going to be, "Well, what have you done to move forward gun control
That's a bathroom. Point of order?
Yeah.
If Michaela, I think, just activates her mic, it'll change the screen.
Before we see something we don't want to see.
Alderman Juddy.
Thank you. I wanted to share some thoughts I have about Monday's holiday, Memorial Day. Traditionally, it is a federal holiday in the United States for mourning the U.S. military personnel who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces. It is not a day intended to honor all dead, but of course, no one is going to discourage people from visiting the graves of family members who have died while not in service, but that's not the intent of the holiday. It is also not intended to celebrate those still living who have served or are serving in the U.S. military. Two other days are set aside for that. Armed Forces Day, which is the third Saturday in May, just this last Saturday, which honors those currently actively serving in the Armed Forces, and Veterans Day on November 11th, which honors those who have served in the United States Armed Forces in the past. The law which establishes the Fourth Monday in May as Memorial Day calls on the people of the United States to observe Memorial Day by praying, according to their individual religious faith, for permanent peace. So I ask that at some time on Monday, Memorial Day, you remember those that gave their lives in service to their country, and that you pray for peace so that their sacrifice will not have been in vain, and that others, our brothers and sisters, our children, our grandchildren, will not have to make the same sacrifice. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
As a follow-up to Alderman Juddy's remarks, I also just wanted to remind the public as well that we have the Memorial Day Parade. It will be going on Monday, May 30th, proceeding down Main Street, starting at 10:30 from Oldman Stadium, so feel free to come out and wave, practice social distancing if that's something that you're more comfortable with, and be mindful of the traffic. To Scott McCalla, I just wanted to pass an update on. He's been a great advocate for the Best Buddies Walk. I'm planning to walk. I know a number of other Aldermen are supporting it. We're planning to walk directly themselves. We did reach out to Best Buddies, both the New Hampshire chapter and then the national one. Both know Scott, so great job being an advocate, Scott. They will make sure that any donations that we collected on our teams will be attributed to Scott, and that he'll get credit for it with his fundraising as well. I'm going to start using his page in my own promotion of the event, just to make sure that people can get direct donations and he can watch that go. But they weren't able to change the association, I guess, so that our teams could go underneath his. So that's a little bit unfortunate, but we'll try to do better next year. This sounds like a great event, and I'm looking forward to attending it and then participating in future events as well. That Saturday, June 11th, is the day of the Buddy Walk in Concord. That evening is also the Light Parade downtown. It's being put on by the Nashville Area Kayak Exploration and Destination Group, the naked people, if you will, also responsible for Alderman Tebow's pond cleanup more than likely. So feel free to come downtown, check out the Light Parade. Basically, they just proceed from Mine Falls down to the, not up to the fish ladder, but like just past the fountain, and then turn around. They deck out their boats and lights. This is done all by volunteers, so it's a great show to watch and a great time. The Taste of Downtown is coming up on June 8th. Anybody who wants a ticket, I highly recommend buying them because they always sell out. And then finally, I wanted to recognize and congratulate Riviera University. They're named in honor of Anne Marie Riviere, who is a founder of the Sisters of the Presentation of Mary. She was recently canonized as a saint, which to Catholics is a big deal. A saint is defined as a person recognized as holy or virtuous and typically regarded as being in heaven after death. So I thought I'd give that definition, because sometimes, as a Catholic, people want to know if I'm praying to my statues, and if not, it's just like, this is a good example of somebody, and they're probably not really going to stop intruders from coming in my apartment, but maybe they'll feel guilty or stub their toe. So Riviera University is a great institution. They're committed to life-inspiring change in others, and I think they've done a great job in doing that in their years here in Nashville, and I think it speaks to their role model and their founding person very highly, and so congratulations to them.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. First, to address the tragedy that occurred, the school shooting. Very hard to follow up with Alderman Clemmons' passion behind his speech. I too am a firm believer in the Second Amendment. It's something I think we're entitled to, but I think reasonable regulation and background checks, it's not, something with due process isn't a big thing to ask for, especially in a school zone. With that, I'll leave that there, because I think Alderman Clemmons did a fantastic job. And thank you to the members of the public that came out tonight that spoke for and against my passionate stance on LGBTQ rights. At the last Alderman meeting, I too support free speech, and to maybe a little bit more extreme than others may think, and free speech is uncomfortable. You have to be willing to hear both sides of the story. Since that meeting, I've had quite a bit of people reach out to me. It's not surprising that a lot of people know that I'm a therapist. Many of my patients are LGBTQ, live right here in Nashville. A lot of them talked about how they felt stigmatized by that particular flag that we were discussing, and quite a few said that they've had thoughts of suicide around it, which, as many of you also know, I'm a huge mental health advocate. So LGBTQ rights, the rights of mental health, you're going to find no one, oh, I don't want to speak for, on the board, but I'm very passionate about those two particular things. And quite frankly, a lot of the folks that have spoke to me, I think they've had enough of soft talk from politicians on what they perceive to be hate. And I think what people hear when they get conversation back that disagrees with them, rather than continue to engage in the debate, they don't hear the actual free speech behind it, which is essential to our democracy. And a lot of the folks I've been talking to, there's two groups. One group that says Nashville is welcoming, there's no hate here, and then the others that say it's subliminal, it's happening, it's not being stood up to. And I have three examples of it happening right here in Nashville. First is the Rayla Campbell Show on WSMN just last month. This show was broadcasting not only anti-gay rhetoric, but anti-Catholic rhetoric. This show was broadcasting not only anti-gay rhetoric, but anti-Catholic rhetoric. Wow. Get me two birds and one stone on that one. You have, they were outraged that the Trevor Project was being supported by the Catholic Church, and they talked about how Catholic Church just isn't Christian enough, I guess. And that's happening, being broadcast right here in this city. So we can't ignore stuff like this is happening. I want to talk about roads. I want to talk about infrastructure. I want to talk about all the nitty-gritty stuff that happens in this city, but we can't ignore the social aspects of our lives. Right here, Nashua State Senator Kevin Abarth supported an amendment to House Bill 1431, essentially pushing schools to out gay children to their parents. That amendment that our senator voted for was so egregious that the New Hampshire Attorney General stated it would make the state liable for suicides as a result of outing these LGBTQ kids. And I am glad the governor said, "If it hits his desk, he's going to let you do it." There was also, someone spoke tonight who happened to also be, might not discuss it publicly, but has a very large statewide platform as an opinion journalist, and the article was Owner Ajaja Bills Crosses the Line. This is essentially an article of harassing a pro-LGBTQ business with that anti-gay flag. That person also was not only the writer of the article, but the subject of the article. I thought journalists were supposed to stay out of the story. I don't want the city of Nashville to turn into Florida. They're trying to kick out Mickey Mouse out of Orlando. I am all for regulating corporations with policy. I'm not for regulating corporations out of their particular stance on a social issue. Cancel culture, I am firmly against cancel culture. I don't like it one bit, but you still have to hear both sides of the story. Just in this case, it's a smaller scale. We're focused on kicking small businesses out of here instead of huge corporations. Is my business next? Probably is, or probably will be. I could foresee, you know, someone at the State House cutting a little section out of Nashua and pushing it into Massachusetts where my office building is. So in the end, I'm always going to speak on behalf of my constituents. A lot of people reached out, more than for than against. And I will tell you that I love working on the right when it comes to fiscal stuff. I love it. I'm on the left when it comes to social stuff. You meet me in the middle. A lot of the people here I respect, despite their political points of view, or some points of view, but we're actually able to have a dialogue and conversation, and that's what free speech is about. And I don't hate a single person that spoke tonight, whether, you know, against me or not. I value the right to speech, and I'm glad that that occurred tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to address the Texas shooting, and Alderman Clemens spoke very passionately and strongly about it. I come from a family of teachers as well, and obviously students. At this point, there are 18 children that are dead, three adults. He shot his grandmother before he started any of this. She's still alive, thank goodness. I don't know for how long, but she is. I had family members that were in the Sandy Hook School. They were traumatized by that. We can't let this continue happening. I grew up as a family of hunters. Believe it or not, as silly as this sounds, my bedroom actually had a gun on the wall. It was my father's gun. He taught me to respect that gun. He taught me never to touch that gun. And he taught me to fear that gun. I've also been a victim of a person who put a gun in my face twice in my life. 61 years old, twice I've had a gun in my face. I don't know how many of you have here. One by somebody I knew, and one by a total stranger. It is life-changing. It was never shot. It doesn't matter. I'll always have that memory. I'm going to ask everybody to hug their family and pray for peace tonight. I can't imagine what Alderman Kelly, Alderman Moran, and anybody, Alderman Como, and all of those who have children, what is going through their mind right now. I can't walk in your shoes, but it has to be horrifying tomorrow when you have to let your children go to school. Everybody says it won't happen here in New Hampshire, and I pray it never does. I sat in the State House while the rights of gun owners were put before the rights of families. I've sat in the State House when the rights of gun owners and parents were put in front of those with children, as Alderman Moran spoke about. Parents should have the right to say what happens to their children. I absolutely agree. But the idea that a child could find a safe haven, and then it's incumbent upon a teacher to have to call that parent about whether or not that child is gay, and the child may have just been talking. One of the things, when a child comes out, and I'm not a social worker, I am not a mental health person, but I have spoken to children who have come out, and one of the things that they say is, sometimes a stranger, or a teacher, or a janitor, or a food service worker is who they trust. They fear talking to their friends because of the hate that comes forward to it. I sat across the table from my brother one day, who turned around and said, "If my children ever came out and said they were gay, he would disown them." I almost lost my mind. I stood up. I said to him, "They'll always have a home with me, and you don't deserve children." I don't think most parents would be like that. I think most parents would be loving and understanding, but the fact that there could be just one, his two boys would always have had a home with me. I know I'm jumping from subject to subject, but I'd also like to, in that context, recognize the food service workers and other school officials who I personally went to with bullying issues and so on. They're more than just doing their job. They help students. I want to thank Donna Graham for all that she does. I called her today after we received an email and told her thank you for everything that she's doing, and that I know how hard she's working. I know all of us feel the same way about her, and she stays here late at night trying to transcribe things, and now I know she's going to have to stay later to transcribe everything I'm saying, so I apologize to Alderman Moran. I don't think your comments were out of line, and I support what you had to say, and your free speech, and you're right, free speech is hard, and I've had to listen to it against me as well as for me. So it's not always easy to take the criticism, but thank you for speaking up, and I appreciate it. To Alderman Tivo, Deb Chisholm is really the person, as well as Cecilia from the mayor's office. She did as well. Deb Chisholm works for community development. She wears multiple hats. She works with the waterways, and we're lucky to have her, and she's always been my go-to resource whenever that comes. So for any of the Aldermen here, you know, reach out to her if you have any kind of issues with that. I want to mention something I talk about a lot, the Shattuck Street Tot Lot. There's been a lot of disruptive teens in that area, and I've spoken to Officer Howe, and thank you to the Nashville PD who have stepped up. Over the weekend, there was an issue there, and they did their best to do that. There will be more police presence. Officer Howe has said he would be there more often as well. And the reason that the teens were there was because he had shooed them out of the Salem Street Tot Lot, where they were being disruptive, and when he told them to leave, they went over up the street to the Shattuck Street Tot Lot. That is unacceptable. The language that comes out of these young people's mouths is hair-raising. I can tell you, I heard it firsthand. It's disturbing, and there's no excuse for it. But there will be more police presence. Going on one more, to the Salem Street Tot Lot. I have scheduled a cleanup on June 11th. It's a Sunday, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Officer Howe is going to try to be there himself, as well as some other officers, to show the community that we care. And the reason why we're cleaning that is because I did the Shattuck Street Tot Lot by myself, and I told the neighbors that I was going to do it by myself. It was very quick, not a lot of trash or poo, five poos. And I went down to the Salem Street Tot Lot. As I drove up, saw all the trash, went, "Oh, no, this is not a one-person job." So that's why I've arranged this, and Officer Howe said that he wanted to be part of it. I'm also talking with the Toll Street Mission to see if we can't get more people to come in and to help. It is true that more hands do make the job a lot lighter. I want to mention about the Best Buddy Walk. Scott, I don't see that you're on here, but I hope that you do hear about this. I am on the team with Alderman Lopez, and to date, I've collected $180 for the walk, I'm sorry, $190 for the walk, with Alderman O'Brien having just passed me some money as well to put towards that fund, and I will make sure that that happens. So thank you for stepping up. Thank you for all your excitement. I cannot help smiling when your face shows up on our screen. It is just amazing. And to Alderman Dowd, I actually do have a question for you. Will there be a sign at the overpass to stop people from walking over from Ward 3 over to your new Ward 2?
Yes, it'll be on the church side of the bridge.
So it'll be on the church side? Okay, great, great. So it'll stop them from going over that overpass? I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I'll make sure residents know that. And as far as the Memorial Day Parade is concerned, hopefully my husband will have recovered enough that he will walk with me on that parade. He is having surgery, oh, actually, his surgery is two days after the parade, so he will be recovered. He won't have had the surgery yet. So I do appreciate that. He is going to try to do the walk with us.
He can take three days.
And he too has collected, I think $50 is what he's collected so far to date. So Scott, we are working to get you that, what is it, AirPods or something to that nature? So we are working to help you get that. And Alderman Jettie, thank you for reminding us what Memorial Day is. I keep reminding people that it is not a Veteran or an Armed Services Day. It is for those that have left us and are no longer here with us. So thank you for reminding those, and prayer for permanent peace is definitely in order. So thank you, and thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. Second, to Alderman Kathy for speaking about this golf. Got it all right. Also, second to Alderman Jettie about the reminder of what Memorial Day is. Thank you very much for that as well. Thanks to the residents of Ward 9. I held my first Ward meeting last week. A few people came. I joked earlier, if a tree falls in the woods and no one shows up, did it really happen? So yes, a few people did show up. It was informative. It was civil. It was productive, in that some folks stepped forward to clean Robey Park, so that date is coming soon. Very happy about that. I was really pleased, well, let me back up a little bit on communication. I think that one of the reasons that I ran and promised to the folks of Ward 9 is that I would communicate back to them, and I enjoy doing that. I was happy to approve the three-year, I think it was three-year contract with the public television station. I think that's important, to keep communication open. Also, on the food service workers, great job by them. And then to talk about the kids that they serve with Memorial Day here, that's a long weekend. There's an organization in town called End 68 Hours of Hunger, where they come up with that number, is that's the time, that's the amount of time from when they have their last meal at school to when they have their first meal on Monday. That's the 68 hours, because that's really where they get their meals. Memorial Day coming, you have to add 24 hours to that, because it's a three-day weekend. Memorial Day for most of us is the start of summer, so that also means that that food insecurity is there. So I would encourage people to check out that charity. Really good things. A lot of my colleagues spoke tonight about what happened down in Texas. It angers me in that these things, events, tragedies, keep happening. As a proud independent, I don't understand why we cannot fix these very big problems in our country. I really don't get it. There's probably about five of them. I'm not eloquent enough to go into them right now, but I cannot understand what we're talking about. We're talking past each other. We're talking about issues that really, when we look back 100 years from now, we'll think, "What were we talking about? Why didn't we spend time on this and not on that?" So I would hope that somehow this gets somebody's attention somewhere, and we're brave. We are Americans. We have a very short attention span, so I don't have a lot of hope for that, but we'll see. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would like to take a personal note to members of the board and to friends in the community that express to us condolences on the passing of my father-in-law. I had the pleasure to know such a very nice gentleman. He was a former job, he was a retired member of the Watertown Mass Fire Department, and though I did not intend to marry a firefighter's daughter, being a firefighter myself, it did help out with the good, bad, and the ugly, and the other packages that come along with it. But over the years, I can really say developed a great friendship with the gentleman. I known him as Dad, I known him as Grandpa, known him as Great Grandpa, and all throughout, he was always a great mentor to me, and he'll be surely missed. In his life, he was the proud grandfather of 12 grandchildren, and also was blessed with seven great-grandchildren. So it's a fine testimony to his life, and besides raising five kids on a fireman's salary. So he did a really fine job, and he'll be surely missed. Unfortunately, the terms of dementia and Alzheimer's is what brought him down, and so if you're looking to worthwhile causes, and there are many, but if you think it contributes to such, to help out that insidious type of disease. And on other things, I would have to say, I agree with all comments with the tragedy that occurred in Texas. The victims will be in my prayers, as well as the surviving family members, and being a state representative, I'm sure the other state representatives can attest, it's difficult to solve this problem. Everybody has an interpretation of what was said in the Second Amendment. So therefore, yeah, I own guns, too. I have period pieces, World War II and Civil War pieces, but they're a lot different than an AR-15, you know? I would not want to face, you know, go in and rob a store with an 1861 musket, you know? So common sense needs to be applied to America, and I personally am getting sick of that. So the comments tonight were very well stated. And I'm glad, Alderman Tivo, you mentioned Sandy Pond. When I was in, you know, on the fire department, I was the executive officer of the dive team, and we used to practice in there, and it does need a little bit of city attention to be cleaned up and everything. And even though we did search, we have yet to found the remnants of the elephants, and those that lived in the city long enough heard probably the story that elephant escaped from the Fairgrounds Lot and went in there, but I don't know, we couldn't find him. I think he got up and floated away, so we'll have to see what happens. But thank you, Madam President.
I never heard that story, Alderman O'Brien. And I'm a native. Committee announcements.
I do have one. Thursday night is going to be the joint meeting- Thursday night is gonna be the joint meeting of the Infrastructure Committee with the Board of Public Works on the administration building that is being built at the landfill. I unfortunately won't be able to make it, I'm scheduled for surgery that day, although I would have much preferred to chair the meeting than to go underneath the knife, but I'm gonna leave it in the more than capable hands of my vice chair, Alderman Dowd. So thank you, Alderman Dowd.
Committee?
Thank you, Madam President. The Penne Check Special Water Committee will be meeting, I know it's a few weeks away, just prior to the June 14th Board of Alderman meeting at 6:30. It's an unusual time, but we wanna get this done so that it can get on the Board of Alderman agenda, and that was the letter that we had seen. It will be, excuse me, I think it's going to the, it's gonna go to the Penne Check meeting, and that'll be that, and then we'll note on it that very day. I will give, so any of the Aldermen that want to come and hear or ask questions, that might be a good time to do it, because we will be putting that through all in the same day. Thank you, Madam President.
Other committee announcements? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, tomorrow evening, we'll have the Budget Committee, we'll be discussing Administrative Services, that's at 7:00 p.m. right here in the Aldomatic Chamber. And then Thursday, I get to chair two meetings, and I'll be chairing the meeting that was just discussed by Alderman O'Brien, and then followed by the Joint Special School Building Committee at 7:00 p.m., Nashua High School North.
Okay, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 9:21 p.m. Thank you, everyone.